The views, information, and opinions expressed during the following program are solely those of the individuals involved and do not necessarily represent the views of Access Communications, its representatives, or its employees.
Welcome to the regular council meeting of the Waburn City Council, held in the council chambers at 5:00 p.m. Monday, December 13th, 2021. We have a full council here tonight. First thing, we have the approval of the minutes of the regular council meeting and strategic planning priorities meeting held November 22nd, 2021, and the minutes of the special council meeting held December 6th, 2021.
I'll second that, Your Worship.
All in favor? Carry unanimously. Additions to the agenda? City Administrator?
Yes, Your Worship, there's no additions from Administration tonight.
Council? Seeing none, we'll move it forward. There's no public hearings and notices. Delegations, proclamations, petitions. We have a petition here tonight, noise at the intersection of First Avenue North and Government Road. City Clerk, Richter, if you would, please.
Thanks, Your Worship. Yes, on December 8th, 2021, Dawn Durrez, and I apologize if I've said that wrong, representing a group of concerned citizens from Sunset Estates condominium located at 445 Government Road, brought a petition to City Hall. The petition contains 20 signatures, and the petition has the following request, and I'll just quote exactly what the petition says. "We request the city to regulate heavy trucks to bypass our city street system by using Range Road 2142 on First Avenue, east side of the city towards Highway 39, and also municipal highway on Township Road 90, four kilometers north of the city on Highway 35, westbound to Highway 39, coming from the west to remain on Highway 39. Also, our taxes should be lowered to compensate for this noisy intersection and the proximity of our building to Highway 13 and Highway 35." So that is what the statement was on the petition, and just to summarize the request, the petition also questions zoning and setback of the condominium in the current location, and they requested the following: reroute heavy trucks on Range Road 2142 north to Township Road 90, and then to connect with Highway 39, and then also to lower taxes due to a noisy intersection. So the city's act provides authority for electors of a municipality to petition city council requesting the passing of a bylaw, a resolution, or any matter within the jurisdiction of city council. According to Section 109 of the city's act, the city clerk has 30 days to determine whether the petition is sufficient. After reviewing the requirements of the petition, it has been found that the petition lacks the requirements as stated in Section 106 of the city's act, where it states that the petition must contain 10% of the population of the city. The petition received does not contain 10%. Based on census numbers of 2016, which was 10,870, you would need, there would be a requirement of 1,087 signatures. The petition does not contain the following items as per the act as well. There's no witness to the signatures, and the residential addresses of each petitioner are not written in full on the petition. Further to the sufficiency of the petition, city council cannot pass a bylaw or a resolution that is outside the scope or authority of council. If council were to reroute traffic off the current truck route and into the rural municipality of Waburn, there would be a requirement of consultation with the stakeholders and other government agencies. As stated, this petition does not meet the requirements in accordance with Section 106 through 108 of the city's act, and therefore, and for those reasons, I, as city clerk, find this petition insufficient, and under Section 109, the city's act, council is not required to take any further regarding this petition unless you wish to do so.
Comments from any of the council? Mr. Mickel?
Thank you, Worship. The concern these people have are the concern that I have as well, too, and I know Administration has looked into that and will continue to look into it. Something is not going to happen overnight. The truck traffic is unreal in that area. That's my walking path in the morning, but you have to do it professionally, and you have to meet with the RM, and of course, the Municipal Government, Department of Highways. The city administration, I know, have done their work and will continue their work, and like I said, it's valid, not the petition, but the request of what you're talking about is a concern, and I'm sure the city will look after it the best way we can.
Ms. Richards?
Thanks, Your Worship. Can we just check a couple of boxes before we go ahead? I'm going to make the assumption this property does meet the necessary setbacks. All of those things are in order? Okay.
Yes, yeah, I've spoke with our development officer, and she has confirmed that they do meet all zoning requirements, including setback.
Good. So there's nothing that can be addressed there. I guess the next step, something we could do, don't disagree with Counselor Mickel, maybe we can look into some of the noise, and I wonder if it would be appropriate to maybe have someone at Police Commission bring this up, to make sure that the officers are aware that we do have an engine brake bylaw in our community, to at least make sure those aren't getting used, because they can be quite loud when they get used, if that's the word. Obviously, I'm not a trucker, but we can do some things to try to reduce the noise, but other than that, I don't think there's much else we can do, but I think we can have those conversations.
Mr. Van Bisch?
Thank you, Worship. Yes, Counselor Richards, I think that can certainly brought up to that Police Commission, as the commission members here can bring that up and mention it to our police chief and see if they can patrol that and just try to, you know, check on the j-brakes to see if they are being applied there.
Perfect. Thank you.
And enforce the law.
Comments? The only comment I have is that I would, this is, these petitions, there's been one or two have come through my term here the last five years, and I would, I would like to ask, and it would be very good if the media would also place it into there, that if you're going to petition council, please check with our city clerk for all the details as to how this is done, because every, we've had a few petitions come forward here now, and they have been, they haven't found the right regulations. Our city clerk will advise you of all the requirements, as the names and addresses, the witnessing, the percentage that you have to have before you petition, so that you know if that, if you feel very strongly about a subject and an issue, that if you're going to petition it, then you have to do it right as per the act, so that city council can move forward on anything as to what they're doing, and unfortunately, this one doesn't meet it, and that's just the way the standards goes.
And, Your Worship, sorry to interrupt, but I will just add that actually, the provincial government has a really good guide on their, on their website, and I just don't have that handy, but I believe it's, there is a guide that literally really explains the petition process, and so if people even phone me, I can lead them right there on, on the internet under the Government of Sask website to find that information as well, if they don't want to, you know, come in here or speak to us. There is also, the Government of Saskatchewan has a really good step-by-step guide as well.
So just for, for the information, Lynette, when, how long do they have to, in between do they have to now to repetition, if they want to get all, everything together and do it again, appropriately?
They, really, they could, because we haven't denied or, you know, denied this petition or anything, and nothing's been, nothing, as far as I know, unless council chooses to do something tonight with this petition, but if they don't, they could bring back a petition, and there's lots of requirements. One of the requirements is you must have your first and last signature and have it submitted within 90 days, so that's kind of a, you know, that's really the only timeframe in there, but yeah, there's lots of information that I can give people, and it is all in the city's act. Like, say, this is a provincial legislated process, not a city process, so the Government of Saskatchewan sets out the requirements for a petition.
Any further comments? Mr. Van Bisch?
Yeah, and as the other councilor says, you know, I understand their, their issue with this corner, but I think residents also should understand that a petition isn't the only route that you need to go to, to bring this to the council's attention. If citizens have an issue that they feel is a big problem, then they can write a letter to City Hall, address it to the councilors, and it can be addressed in that format also. You don't have to go through the process of a petition, which is quite a lengthy process and probably not necessary in most cases anyway, so.
If you know of further comments, then does council wish to do anything more other than take this for information? Information only? Okay, moving forward. Reports to standing committees, there's none. The consent agenda, we have the fire department report of November, water treatment plant report of November, cash activity report, building department report, public works November report, and these are all found on, will be found on our city website. Do we have a motion to accept these?
I have, and, Your Worship, make a motion that the items on the consent agenda be accepted as presented.
I'll second that, Your Worship.
Questions?
Thank you, Worship. I was just reading through some of these reports that come into us, and I just want to say thank you to the fire brigade, because they all come out on a Wednesday night, and they take time away from their regular jobs to complete the training, to make sure that we are safe as citizens, so thank you to them, and I really encourage people to check out those reports, just to find out how much extra time that our citizens do put into their work.
I'd also like to mention that we have a new deputy chief, Mr. Warren, his name again, if you could give some details.
Thanks, Your Worship. So Trent Lee started with the department on December 1st. He was previously working in Saskatoon as an inspector for the city of Saskatoon within their fire department, so we'd like to welcome Trent to our, to our city.
So, and then that is where we are, go from there. So, all in favor? Carry unanimously. Motions. Councils payable, do you have a motion, please?
Your Worship, I'd like to make the motion that the purchases in the amount of $6,449,059.77 from November the 19th to December the 9th, 2021, be passed for payment.
I'll second that, Your Worship. Discussion? Call the question, all in favor? Carry unanimously. 2022 budget deadline extension, Director of Finance, Ms. Howell?
Yes, so our policy states that council approve the budget by December 20th of each year, unless you approve to, by motion, an alternative date. The 2022 budget requires additional time, and therefore, the budget deadline will not be met as of December 20th, so I'm just requesting a motion to extend it to January 31st, but our target date is to have it approved at the January 10th meeting.
Do you have a motion, please?
Your Worship, I make a motion that the request of the Director of Finance for the 2022 annual budget deadline of December 20th, as per the city of Waburn annual budget policy, be extended to January 31st, 2022 be approved.
Your Worship, I'll second that motion. Discussion? Call the question, all in favor? Carry unanimously. Chemical supply tender, Director of Engineering, Wilkinson, please.
Yes, thank you. So this is for the 2022 water treatment chemical supplies. The city of Waburn is committed to providing a safe and sufficient supply of drinking water to the residents. Waburn's water comes from Nickel Lake to the water treatment plant, where it goes through a series of treatments, filtration system, and disinfection process, or being sent to the distribution system. The chemicals required for the treatment and disinfection processes used by the Waburn Water Treatment Plant are supplied and delivered by various licensed chemical suppliers. Chemical pricing is directly affected by unprecedented fluctuations in global supply chains, raw materials, and inbound transportation, transport of product. Therefore, chemical companies are reluctant to bid on a multi-year contract. For this reason, the city typically only awards suppliers with a one-to-two-year chemical supply contract. On October 7th, the city of Waburn posted the 2022-23 water treatment chemical supply tender on SaaS tenders in the city website. Chemicals obtained through the competitive process will be utilized in water treatment processes. Quotations were to be received by the city of Waburn by November 15th at 1:00 p.m. A total of seven tenders were received. The results of the tenders are as follows, so you can see that they had the option to bid on one or all of the chemicals, so it just depends on what they do supply, so you'll see that some of them only bid on a few of them, and then some of them only bid on one, just depending on what they can supply. So we did give them the bidder's option to submit bids for the 2020 year or for 2022 and 2023. Only two bidders submitted pricing for both the 2022 and 2023 years. Therefore, the city only evaluated the pricing for the 2022 year and will re-tender again and negotiate 2023 pricing prior to 2023, so. Based on the bids received, we're making the following recommendations: that Brenta Canada be awarded the supplies of potassium permanganate, chlorine gas toners, and sodium hydrochloride with pails and barrels; that Border Chemical Company Limited be awarded the supply of liquid aluminum sulfate; Clear Water Equipment Technologies be awarded the supplies of hydrofluoric acid fluoride and ammonium sulfate; and then Clear Tech Industries be awarded the supply of sodium hydroxide, which is caustic soda.
Do you have a motion? Mr. Jenkey?
Your Worship, I am delighted.
You can just say what she, what she said?
Yes. Your Worship, I am delighted to move that council accept the following bids for the 2022 chemical supply for the water treatment plant. Brenta Canada potassium permanganate in the amount of $6.81 per kilogram; Brenta Canada chlorine gas toners in the amount of $1.56 per kilogram; Brenta for sodium hydrochloride in the amount of $0.92 per liter, pails, and $1.17 per liter barrels; Border Chemical Company Limited liquid aluminum sulfate in the amount of 43, I guess, 43.1 cents per kilogram; Clear Water Equipment Technologies hydrofluoric acid in the amount of 67.8 cents per kilogram, and 1% HFSA; Clear Water Equipment Technologies ammonium sulfate in the amount of $2.89 per kilogram; and Clear Tech Industries sodium hydroxide in the amount of 66 cents a kilogram.
Second? Second?
I will second that, Your Worship.
Discussion?
Counselor Jenkey, I'm impressed. That's very good. Counselor Corrigan wanted it, but you did a good job.
Thank you, Counselor Mickel.
Call the question, all in favor? Carry unanimously. Sanitary sewer cleaning services policy. Again, Director of Engineering, Wilkinson?
Yes, good evening. So I'm just going to present the sanitary cleaning and maintenance services policy that we have created. So for purpose, the city of Waburn strives to provide the community with timely maintenance and rehabilitation of sewer and water infrastructure connections through the Water and Sewer Service Connection Fund. The city implemented a sewer, a service connection fee to the city's utility services charges in 1998 for this Water and Sewer Service Connection Fund to cover the cost of maintenance, which includes unclogging or replacement of existing water and/or sewer service connections. The purpose of this policy is to outline minimum standard requirements, service levels, and expectations for sewer cleaning and maintenance services covered under the Water and Sewer Service Connection Fund. Implementation of this policy will provide the community with consistent high quality of public service and support the city's management of wastewater infrastructure maintenance and rehabilitation. For scope, this policy applies to all existing and new sanitary service connections to the city of Waburn that are funded under the Water and Sewer Service Connection Fund in accordance to the sewer bylaw number 2007-3089. For jurisdiction, the Director of Engineering or designate shall be responsible for determining the minimum level of service, equipment, and technology requirements, and deliverables for the contract that will provide the community with consistent high-quality service and support the sustainability of the city's wastewater infrastructure. Procedure, the city shall enter into a contractual agreement with one or more contractors to obtain a 24-hour on-call sewer cleaning and maintenance services that meet the city's requirements. The Water and Sewer Service Connection Fund will only cover costs of sewer cleaning and maintenance service calls from city-approved service providers holding a valid contract with the city unless it can be shown that the plug sewer resulted from, resulted from the owner's negligence, sorry. So responsibilities, from the city of Waburn, follow a standard procurement process to acquire methods, equipment details, and a non-conditional rate per service call for sanitary sewer cleaning and maintenance services; enter into a contractual agreement with one or more successful proponents for a 24-hour on-call sanitary sewer cleaning and maintenance services; provide public notification to all affected ratepayers and property owners of policy details and city-approved service providers that will be covered under the Water and Sewer Service Connection Fund; use the Water and Sewer Service Connection Fund to remit payment to city-approved contractors responding to and providing sewer cleaning and maintenance services in accordance with the contract requirements and pricing; review contract at time of service agreement renewal, updating technology and equipment requirements as needed. For contractors, they are required to respond to service calls and be available 24 hours per day, seven days per week, and 365 days per year for the term of the contract. They are to provide wall-to-wall sewer pipe cleaning services in accordance with the contract requirements and/or limitations. They will execute, complete, and warranty the sewer cleaning and maintenance services in accordance to the contract requirements. They will supply the city with applicable deliverables, including inspection reports and camera footage data in accordance with the contract requirements. As for property owners, they can request city-approved vendors for sanitary sewer cleaning and maintenance services to receive city coverage under the Water and Sewer Service Connection Fund. They must pay for sewer cleaning and maintenance services provided by a vendor not approved for funding under the Water and Sewer Service Connection Fund and/or if the plug sewer resulted from the owner's negligence, and they will provide contractors with safe and adequate sewer cleanout access. So that's the policy, and then the next is awarding of a contract under the RFP. Would you like me to do that as well, and then?
Yes, if you would, please.
Yep.
No, just a minute.
You want to talk just about the policy? Okay.
Okay, go ahead.
Your Worship.
Do you have a motion?
Yes, I do. Your Worship, I'd like to make the motion that the sanitary sewer cleaning and maintenance services policy for the city of Waburn, as presented by the Director of Engineering, be approved.
Your Worship, I'll second that motion.
Discussion? Go ahead, oh, go ahead, Mr. Mickel.
Worship, to Engineering, Jennifer, what's, what's the main reason why the city is doing this? We've done things for 20 years plus, and all of a sudden, we're making that change. Why, why, why are we doing it?
So specifically speaking to the policy, it is to give a set minimum requirements, and a lot of it is to do with, we know we have aging infrastructure, so a lot of it is to acquire inspection reports and get actual camera footage, so we can know where our asset management of the sewer system is at. So a lot of it is so that we can be proactive instead of reactive, so if we, you know, obtain inspection reports that tell us we know that's failing, we can fix it before it fails, and that is, a lot of it is to, is to maintain that minimum level of service and so that we can be more aware as a city and ask, and manage our assets a little easier.
Also, Engineering, Jennifer, people that were doing this work before for us, were they, have they been contacted to explain to them in detail what the city is moving forward to?
Yeah, we spoke with the contract, with various contractors that were doing the service now. We spoke with them, and we kind of went over everything, as well as they all had the opportunity to review the RFP, bid on the RFP, and within that, they were allowed to get any clarifications, questions, and go over it with us.
Okay, what happens if, if in fact, this is passed this evening? If, say, for example, people are used to the old ways and get the person they had involved before, is there any leeway time that we can give these people in case of causing a disturbance or whatever?
So, yeah, we're going to have an education period and kind of a leeway period where we can notify all homeowners of the change, especially if they have pre-existing appointments set up or situations like that. So upon word of the contract, which is the next piece that we're recommending, we will do, we'll do a social media campaign, as well as we will do mailouts in the utility bills, and then also, we will have a bit of a grace period that if, for some reason, they did hire somebody that wasn't approved or recommended, which nothing has passed yet, so it would be based on passing the RFP, if that would happen, we would still have a grace period where we would honor another vendor.
One more, one more statement, it's the last one. Jennifer, when, when people phone in about an unplugged sewer, did they phone the city of Waburn, or did they phone the plumber?
Typically, they will phone the plumber directly, so that's why we have an education period where we're going to be notifying homeowners of who they can call. Sometimes they will call the city, that's a little more rare, and we, if they do call the city, we would direct them in the right direction of who they need to call, because it, it can really depend if it is on their side or if it's on our side of the property line, too, so.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Your Worship. Very good report, and I appreciate the depth in here. I just want to be sure that, that we're all on the same page. So what we're doing here with, particularly with the camera access, if that's the right word, into the lines, is you're creating now a database through, the asset mapping is the terminology that we use inside City Hall, but it's a database, then, of all the sewer lines in the city. There'll be video, I get, we're not going to have them all done, but as they get encountered, right?
Yeah.
So then we're able to create a bit of a database, and then, much like you're doing with our streets and sidewalks, you'll have priority ones, priority twos, priority threes. Is that sort of what I understand will start to happen, Jen?
Yeah, exactly. So that perhaps asks for our budget going forward, you know, it might be in some cases where we, we budget every year for like sewer relining or sewer replacements, we budget that every year. This gives us, instead of a reactive where, you know, we'll have one fail and we use that budget, this would give us a proactive approach to it, that we can actually get to it, and we would budget, we'd have the budget set aside, and we would actually go after the ones that we know are imminent to fail, and so by having that data, it allows us just to plan ahead instead of having to deal with it after it's already broken.
Okay, thanks.
And, yeah, it's, it's in a GIS system, so we keep it, we track it, we log it. Anytime we dig up anything, this actually allows it to get before we've actually had to dig up the street, so that really allows us just a better way of dealing with it.
So, sorry, just one more point of clarification. Further, Counselor Mickel asked you who to call, and I think you're going to answer this question in the next one, but just in case you don't. So once I make the call, do I pay the contractor, or does the contractor bill the city of Waburn directly?
If you use the city-approved contractor, they will bill directly to the city.
Okay, thank you.
And that's allowable how many times a year? Once a year?
Twice.
Twice a year. So then the last question I have is that the city's responsibility and the homeowners, either is my responsibility as homeowner out to the street, out to the sidewalk, and then from the sidewalk out to the city?
I don't know if we can pull the map up, but...
I feel like, and this would be going back a lot of years when I used to be in utilities, so this is a while back, but I believe it was to six feet from the foundation of the home, like six feet outside of the house's foundation. I think that's, the city's responsibility is beyond six feet to the street.
Okay, so, I mean, but...
Yeah, it's not property, it's not property line, and we actually do have a diagram on the city website that, that shows the responsibility of your homeowner responsibility to your city responsibility, so.
Okay, just so long as the people understand that. You've got something there, and so they've got some reference. Okay. Any other further questions? Mr. Jenkey?
Thank you, Your Worship. Jennifer, I don't need a lot of detail on this, but where it says that it will be reimbursed or funded unless it resulted in owner's negligence, is that defined, and does that cover things like internal equipment malfunctions, or is that what you mean when you say twice a year?
So the owner's negligence is defined in the sewer bylaw of exactly what it could be, so if your sewer is plugged because of something that the homeowner has put down the line, we tend to come in, if it's, you know, tree roots that have disrupted, or if there's a sagging in the line, or it's a failure of the infrastructure. If it is due to the homeowner's putting something down the line, that is considered negligent on the homeowner's part, where they would be responsible for the cost. And typically, when we clean these out, and especially with camera footage, we'll be able to tell that.
Right, so at a high level, that's not really changing, that's the same as it always has been?
That's the same as it's always been. That is not changing at all, that is actually defined in our bylaw.
Excellent, thank you.
Thanks, Your Worship. I do like the idea of having that camera footage, though, Jennifer. I think that'd be helpful in determining what exactly, because I, as a homeowner, of course, I'm going to be very reluctant to say that it was my fault, so I do appreciate that now we'll be able to review footage, and we'll know if it's a tree root, or if I've... a tree root, or if I've put my laptop in the sewer, so.
Yeah.
Or my golf clubs, perhaps.
Okay, further questions? Seeing none, all in favor? Gary DeNans. Sanitary sewer cleaning RFP. Again, Director?
Okay. So the City of Waverne Engineering Department is proposing the implementation of a sewer cleaning policy, and that was just what we talked about, so I'm going to move on from the policy. So the sewer cleaning service policy will allow the city to establish contractual price agreements for a consistent 24-hour on-call sanitary sewer maintenance service that provides total sewer line cleaning, camera footage and inspection reports, and a warranty period. With this increased level of service of wall-to-wall sewer pipe cleaning and video inspection, the city expects to find more defects with the structural integrity of the underground infrastructure. Aligning with the asset management policy, the city will be able to address these defects with repairs and annual sewer renewals in order of priority, and with the end result of less sewer maintenance and cleaning call-out services required. On October 22nd, the request for a proposal of a sanitary sewer cleaning service contract was posted on SaaS tenders in the city website. Proposals were to be received by the City of Waverne no later than November 12th at 1:00 p.m. A total of three proposals were received, and below is a summary of the three local contractors that bid. And it does define different service rates based on if the call is during business hours or if it is a non-business hours, as well as the warranty period below. All proposals submitted were reviewed to ensure bidders submitted all response requirements, including sewer cleaning service methods, including types of equipment used, a warranty period for the services, and the form of delivery for video inspections and/or reports. Vortex Plumbing and Heating submitted the lowest rates for both business and non-business hours, along with the longest warranty period of one year. Vortex rate of $333 per service call is higher than the previously $140 per call that was covered under the Connection Fund up to twice a year, but Vortex includes a proposed warranty period of one year resulting in an increase of $53 per year. Vortex Plumbing and Heating acknowledged and provided a clear understanding of all the requirements and specifications listed in the RFP. Besides submitting the lowest bid for the services, Vortex also highlighted the 24/7 backup call center guaranteeing fast and reliable 24/7 response to service calls and same-day scheduled service. Vortex's proposal clearly outlined their equipment capabilities using the latest technology to achieve wall-to-wall cleaning and clear video inspection data. Vortex also clearly identified responsibilities that would be extended to the homeowners and limitations due to inadequate sewer cleanout access that will allow the city to clarify all responsibilities to property owners and services covered and not covered under the Connection Fund during the rollout of the new sewer cleaning policy. It is recommended that the 2021 sanitary sewer cleaning services contract be awarded to Vortex Plumbing and Heating for the rates of $333 during business hours and $388.50 non-business hours, with a one-year warranty period for a three-year contract term from January 1st, 2022 to December 31st, 2024.
Do you have a motion, please?
Yes, your worship. I'd like to make a motion that our proposal to provide 2021 sanitary sewer cleaning services contract for the City of Waverne from Vortex Plumbing and Heating from January 1st, 2022 to December 31st, 2024 be approved with the rates as provided.
Your worship, I'll second that motion.
Discussion?
Thank you, worship. Jen, I know I sent this question to you earlier today. The difference in the rates between the 24-hour service or the after-hours service, I noticed that there's quite a difference between Vortex and the other two companies submitted bids. Did they elaborate on that?
A lot of it, I think, is based on the personnel available, and if, Vortex has a large staff, which I think benefits them, because they always have that on-call person available versus some of the smaller companies, they would have to actually do some outside contracting to cover off those kind of hour response, so I think that is where some difference comes in. So, and I think just, people do have a different rate of service for after-hours.
Good. Thanks, your worship, Jen. Just a couple more questions. If this goes ahead, and Vortex is the city's authorized provider, if that's the right word, that doesn't prohibit me from getting anybody I want to come into my house to do the work, is that correct?
Absolutely. Any homeowner is allowed to call anybody to do this kind of service for them. The city will only cover the costs. Should you guys award it, or should we award it to Vortex, we would only cover the cost for Vortex doing the work. So you still have the freedom as a homeowner to call whoever you wish.
Yeah, thank you for that. The second part, there's a couple of, the one thing in there that doesn't sort of reconcile for me, and that's that if Vortex is offering a one-year warranty, but we allow for twice a year to be cleaned out, how does that reconcile if they shouldn't be coming, they shouldn't be getting paid twice in one year if the warranty is for a year?
Yeah, exactly. It would result in if they were to clean it out, and then later on, the line plugged up again, but it was because the sewer line, say, collapsed or failed, then in those cases, we would pay for double the call, right? Because the first situation was where they just cleaned it out, it freed, it was fine, but later there was a defect in the sewer. So there are some, like, kind of, I guess, limitations on each cleanout, where there are situations where we might have to go back to a house twice a year. But in a regular cleanout, they will warranty that.
Yeah, thank you for that.
Mr. Van Betchu?
Thank you, worship. As it is a new program and new service provider, so to speak, I just wonder, the three-year term rather than a shorter term seems, though, it's just something new, and just as a caution.
Yeah, so there are a few reasons for the three-year term. So one is by offering a longer contract, they're willing to provide better rates. So that plays into it, is the length of the contract and kind of that, I guess, carrot for that. We do have written in the agreement that we will be doing performance evaluations on Vortex, and we will be logging any complaints or areas where homeowners have called us that they feel the service is not satisfactory. And we have stated that if Vortex is not meeting that 24-hour service, or they're not meeting the requirements, that the contract can be redacted before the three years. And also, the other side to it is, there is a big education piece that goes with this to homeowners, and it will be somewhat costly, and all the mailouts, and all of the notification to homeowners, trying to get them to understand that this is the contractor, as well as a lot of administration staff time. To do that yearly becomes a really big piece, and that's why we've gone to a three-year.
One more question.
Go ahead.
And I think Ryan brought this to light when he asked his question earlier, and then I thought about it a bit. So before, when the previous provider was in there, it was kind of a gimme that, oh, the city will cover that, because it was plugged, and we get to do this every six months, and it'll be covered. Now we have a camera that goes in there and can tell you whether it's six inches on this side of the house owner's property, or six inches on the side of the city's property. So are we going to run into conflict with, oh, it's your responsibility, it's not the city's responsibility, all of a sudden, no? You know, before, when they phoned, it was kind of a gimme that it was the city's responsibility. And now with the camera footage, they can tell exactly where the blockage is and what it is, whereas before, it was kind of an unknown.
Yeah, there's definitely going to be more responsibility on the homeowners in this situation, where in those cases, yes, it would be deemed homeowner's responsibility. And there might have been situations where the city just picked it up and didn't review.
That'll have to be a large part of the education process, I think.
Yeah, exactly, and I think that's part of it, is not only notifying people of this set-approved vendor, but also giving them an idea of what is expected of them as homeowners, and, you know, like, providing a safe access. That means that if they're coming in there, they're probably not going to move furniture to get access, things like that. That'll be the homeowner's responsibility to move the furniture so they can get the proper access. And that will be all clearly outlined to homeowners, so they can fully understand that.
And I've seen the process done, and it's excellent. It is a terrific process, and the camera is, you know, certainly a bonus besides that, but even the process they use with the thorough cleaning of the sewer line is good, so.
This, you speak of homeowner all the time. Is this homeowner and commercial, are they treated the same, or is it commercial in the role?
I don't think we, I don't think we cover commercial.
I believe we only do for residential.
Yeah, it's only residential.
This is just a residential program?
Yeah.
Okay, just to, I was thinking, and how do apartments apply?
Yeah, no, it's residential program.
That's residential program?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, worship, for letting me speak in. Jennifer, I love the fact that you've done all this research. I understand the policy, and thank you so much for the information. But because it's a new program, I just can't support the policy or the recommendation the way it's written with one single provider to the city for the next three years. I think an education piece for all three of the companies going forward would have been a little bit better, or if you guys would consider procedure, or exercise procedure number four, where it's one or more contractors just for the first term, and then from there, we go to a single contractor.
So as administration, we sat down and we did a lot of review, because we know these are all local companies, and we know this is a difficult situation when you're picking between three local people that contribute back to your community. The biggest thing for us is not only the price, is the variation in equipment, the variation in services supplied, and a big thing is the warranty. When we received Vortex's quote, they gave a much more detailed understanding of everything, because they have been doing this work. It's not like they're out there not doing some of this work, they are called, and they provide all this information, where the other companies could not give that detail. They did not outline exactly the services they're going to be, along with that level of equipment. Vortex has a much higher level of equipment, and they do have a large staff to support this. And so when it came down to it, we definitely did go into this thinking we would probably have one or more contract, but there was such a variation between the three that there was really no way to comparably award to more than one of them. Vortex was just that much above the other two.
Thank you.
Mr. Richards, go ahead. You want to talk?
Thanks, your worship. I'm not opposed to what Counselor Morris said is saying, and I know that you and I talked about this. I think the trouble, I think the trouble with that concept becomes that everybody would have to be held to that same price of $333, or worse yet, the after-hours, in which the other two are $200 higher. And I'm not, obviously, you know, the process of executing an RFP isn't my strong suit, but I suspect if we were to start to tinker with this, we'd be back to square one on the RFP. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
We would, it's not one of those things where I can just go and say, you know what, like, you offer the same as them, and Vortex put all the work in, and they're based on, I think the biggest part for us was Vortex's level of understanding of this, and understanding and outlining all the situations that could arise from it. They were, just had so much more knowledge on it, and they do have top-of-the-line technology equipment that we are looking for at the cheapest rate.
But you have a failsafe, that you're doing quality inspections, quality assurance inspections, right?
Exactly, and that is written into their agreement, that they are offered a three-year term, but if they are not meeting the requirements of that agreement and not providing the level of service that we want as a city and what we want to provide to the residents, we do have the option to terminate that contract, and that is written in there, and that was written in the RFP to make them aware that they would be audited. We would be doing quality assurance checks on them, so we do have that, that, yes, we're awarding them three years, but they have to meet their side of the agreement.
Mr. Van Betchu?
Thank you. I think, thanks, Jennifer, for all your work, and I think we're very fortunate to have three local companies that bid on this product, and we got the best price, and by the sounds of it, probably the best product, you know, for the best price, so I think we should be very happy and fortunate that we got such good pricing, and it looks like we're going to get great service and a good product for it, so I will definitely support this.
Mr. Mickle, did you want to make?
Yeah, just one more last statement. Thanks, Jennifer, for your work. Things in old school, sometimes they do change, and technology's taken over. And I know what you're doing, I've seen some of the reaction, and it does work, but we're fortunate, as Counselor Van Betchu said, that we have local people bidding on this. Everybody had the opportunity, that's fantastic. The numbers are there, so we got to go with what's presented, so I'll certainly support the motion.
Any other comments?
I have to agree with Counselor Mickle on this. I certainly would like to be able to support every company in town at every chance we get, but we have to go with the best price, and I'm a little uncomfortable, as Counselor Richard pointed out, adjusting the RFP at this point in the process.
I'm definitely an advocate for supporting the best bid in any process, and I believe that's what we're doing here today. The question that I have, though, is, what is the process? Could you explain the process to us as to how you do the quality control?
So there would be a few steps in it. One, we would be looking to review after the first six months. So the first three months, we were kind of tentatively setting as an education piece, adjusting into that contract that people would be using. Maybe we would have some lap over where we would still allow some other contractors in in the first three months, while we educate people, because we don't want to put it all on the homeowner, that they're like, well, we didn't know, and we didn't do a good job of educating them on who they could use. So that's the first three months. Within six months, we do it. The nice thing is, when we receive all the, when we receive all the, I guess, the receipts or whatever from the homeowners, or from the contractors, they give the homeowner's address, so we can go back and we can contact homeowners. And we do encourage the homeowners to give us feedback on this, and that'll be part of that education piece, is please give us feedback on Vortex's service to let us know how they are doing for you and with that kind of service. And if it's good or bad, we want to hear it. But also, we might reach out to residents that have used them and said, how do you feel about this service? Is this working for you? And that, so it'll be with that, and as well as we, we are doing a lot with our contractor management to speak with our contractors on a regular basis that we have set contracts with, to make sure that they are fulfilling their obligations and see how things are working for them. So we'll be touching base with Vortex as well. And then, as Waverne is a very connected community, and our public work staff is very involved in the community, we know that they are going to hear about this, and they will be touching base with people they know that would have used it.
Thank you.
Okay. Any further comments? All the question, all in favor? Jerry DeNans. Pardon me, pardon me, I apologize. All those opposed? One opposed? Did you want that? It's too late for a recorded vote, I guess, so, but one opposed? And six in favor, one opposed. Street naming, Development Officer Fletcher, please?
Good evening, councilors. A request was received for naming of civic property that was submitted by Ken Murray. Ken has requested that his father and great-grandfather, both having the same namesake of Sam Murray, be considered for naming of civic property. Ken submitted the required application form and supporting documentation, including newspaper clippings and background information. The City of Waverne naming civic property policy states that names may be considered for the names master list if they meet the following criteria: An outstanding contribution by any individual from the public at large or former city employees in any of the following ways: A person who has demonstrated excellence, courage, or exceptional dedication to service in ways that bring special credit to the City of Waverne, the Province of Saskatchewan, or Canada; A person who has volunteered significant amounts of time, effort, and/or resources to support community services or humanitarian causes; And a person who has achieved a deed or activity performed in an outstanding professional manner or of an uncommonly high standard that brings considerable benefit to the City of Waverne, the Province of Saskatchewan, or Canada. Sam Murray served as a city councillor from 1967 to 1970, and notably, the first time he ran in 1961, it resulted in a tie vote, and he lost at the draw of a name from a hat. He played an important role in the start of the distillery, Western Wiring Cable, and the Waverne Flying Club. He also served on the committee that brought the first oil show to Waverne. He also served on the committee that brought the first oil show to Wayburn, and he was very involved in the community and played a vital role in making Wayburn a viable community. So, the recommendation, the Street Naming Advisory Committee met on November 25th to review the application and unanimously passed a motion to recommend to council that Sam Murray be added to the Names Master List under Outstanding Contributions.
Then, do we need a motion to add that into there?
Thanks for that, Janine. I make a motion out of the recommendation of the Street Naming Advisory Committee to add Sam Murray to the Names, Names Master List under Outstanding Contributions be approved.
I'll second that, Your Worship.
Any comments? Call the question, all in favor? Carrie DeNance. Council meeting calendar. City Clerk?
Thanks, Your Worship. It's that time of year again to set our 2022 council meetings. We do this every year for several years, so I usually just go through, take a look at the following year based on our council procedures bylaw, where we must meet the second and fourth Mondays of the month, but occasionally, we fall on a stat holiday, so the council procedures bylaw does account for that, and then we would move the meeting to the next day, which would be the, usually the Tuesday. And then there is a couple of days that we could look at to cancel and reschedule or just cancel. Those days that I'm proposing, in the summer, we usually only hold one meeting in July and one meeting in August, and just so the meetings are evenly spread out, I'm recommending that we cancel the July 11th and 25th regular meeting and hold one meeting on July 18th. And further, that we also cancel the August 8th and August 22nd meeting and hold that meeting for August on August 15th. And then, in December, we usually do not hold meetings between the two holidays, Christmas Day and New Year's Day, and the normal second meeting of December would be December 27th, so I'm also proposing that we cancel that meeting. So, there would only be one meeting in December of 2022, just like this year. So, that is my recommendation, that those three, three meetings get changed or canceled. And other than that, there's only two days that the holidays fall on a stat, and that is Easter on April. I have to look at my calendar, sorry, I should have had that up. So, April 24th, so we will hold the meeting on Tuesday, April 24th, instead of the Monday, the 23rd, and then we will also hold the meeting for Thanksgiving. Thanksgiving Monday is always the second Monday, so we always hold Thanksgiving on the Tuesday, October 11th. So, if council so wishes, we could make a motion and accept those dates.
Go ahead.
Your Worship, I would move that council accept the recommendation to set the 2022 council meeting calendar with the amendments provided to the regular schedule in accordance with the Council Procedures Bylaw 2018-3390.
Second?
I'll second that, Your Worship.
Danette, just to ask, there's no conflict for SUMA, and there's no conflict for FCM?
I don't believe so. I believe the SUMA meetings are at the very beginning of April, and the FCM is always the very beginning of June, so there won't be any conflicts.
Okay. So long as we have those, because those are two of our big meetings, so, okay.
You're concerned about the FCM, are you?
Well, seeing that's in Regina, I am. That's the only time, that's the, that's the only time I'm concerned about that, so. I would just point a clarification there, so. The, we have, with that, call the question, all in favor? Carrie DeNance. No introduction of bylaws, no unfinished business. New business, we have a home-based business. Again, Development Officer Fletcher, and just before we start there, I apologize again to Councilor Morsette on your, missing your, your descending vote there. I say it again, if anybody wishes to, to have a recorded vote, make sure you say it before I take a call for the vote, too. Also, if you're going to do a descending vote, and you feel strong enough, you want a recorded vote, we have to have it before the vote. Okay, go ahead.
An application has been received to operate a child, childcare business out of their residence at 1703 Eagle Sham Avenue, located in the R2 Zone. The business will operate eight to five, Monday to Friday. It would be considered a controversial use, as this business involves clients being directed to the home throughout the day. There's a minimal anticipated increase to traffic flow. They estimate four to six families dropping off and picking up, and parking is available in the driveway. Home-based businesses are permitted in the R2 Zone in residential dwellings. They're generally deemed controversial when customers or clients are attending the home, and they require public notification and council review. Neighborhood notices were mailed out on November 26 to all neighbors within a 50-meter radius of the applicant's home. They received the notices and were given the opportunity to comment on the application, and no concerns or objections have been received. Home-based businesses are permitted use, meaning that landowners have the right to undertake the use in accordance with the bylaw, unless provisions of the bylaw are specifically contravened. Home-based businesses generally must meet the following provisions: They must be incidental to the use of the premise as a residence, be compatible with residential uses, be limited in extent to, in terms of volume of materials sold and number of clients, not substantially increase the volume of traffic, and not detract from the residential character of the zone. We've reviewed the application, and are of the opinion that the home-based business application meets the requirements of the zoning bylaw, and therefore, recommending option number one to council. Option number one would be that council approves home-based business permit 2021.015 at 1703 Eagle Sham Avenue, subject to the following conditions: No person other than a resident of the dwelling unit shall be engaged in the home-based business as an employee or volunteer; No advertisement carrying the address of the dwelling in which the home-based business occurs may be placed in any media; The face of any home-based business sign on site must not exceed 0.092 square meters and must be placed within the inside half of the front yard setback; Operating hours will be limited to 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. In accordance with the Childcare Act, no more than eight children, including the children of the care provider, may be cared for in the residence at one time; Provincial regulations and licensing requirements must be followed where applicable; Home-based businesses are subject to periodic review to ensure compliance, and the owner's driveway shall be used for off-street parking of clients; And a City of Wayburn business license shall be obtained prior to the operation. Option number two would be to refuse the home-based business permit for the following reasons, and they would have to be provided tonight.
Do you have a motion, please?
Thanks, Your Worship. I'll make a motion that council approves home-based business permit 2021.015 for a childcare business at 1703 Eagle Sham Avenue, subject to the conditions presented.
Second?
Your Worship, I'll second that motion.
Discussion? Mr. Richards?
Yeah, thanks. Thanks, Your Worship. As always, Janine, I'll ask, just to be clear, the letters went out to the neighbors, there were no responses whatsoever. We make these conditions very clear to the home-based business about signage, about parking, about not having employees. All of those things are clear, and this person's agreed to that. They will, because they're a daycare, they'll fall under a provincially regulated condition. That's a condition on here as well, and all of this stuff is reviewed, and I understand we're going to have a conversation going forward about reviewing these home-based businesses, and I really do appreciate that, so thank you very much.
Mr. Gordon?
Thank you, Your Worship. Thank you for the report, Janine. It's very thorough, and I fully support this particular application. My question is, and it's for those that are listening or watching and reading reports from council, is if someone is looking at creating their own home-based business, as we've had numerous in, in the past years, and yet want to circumvent obtaining a license to do such, could you explain what the consequences of that could be for those individuals?
I believe those would be regulated under the business license, and Donette may be able to speak to that further.
Thanks, Janine. So, yes, I, I would say, an application for a home occupation, once council approves that permit here, after it's approved, then I go ahead and do a business license. If someone, for some reason, either did not renew, did not pay their business license, or simply operated without obtaining a permit, they can be fined up to $2,000 for the, in case of an individual, and a corporation can be fined up to $5,000. The bylaw officer can also inspect any business, house, place, or premise licensed under this bylaw.
Also, would it be, would you, would it be possible that if an individual is running a, a business through their home that wasn't licensed, that their liability insurance could be considered void if an accident were to occur there? So...
I would, I can't speak to that, I honestly don't.
That'd be something that we'd have to look into, then.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I'm just wondering about those particular things, because I think there are those, there are individuals that do set up businesses but don't understand the process and, and what it may entail, and, and what may happen if they don't go through all the proper steps. I mean, certainly, we're not going to set up a, some sort of security force to go out and check everyone's home as to whether they're, you know, have businesses there or not, but I think it's prudent for us to give that information and to inform the public as much as possible as to what the consequences could be for them not do, taking the proper steps. Thank you.
Any further questions? Senior, further questions? Call the question, all in favor? Carrie DeNance. Commercial incentive program. City Manager Warren?
So, within a direction from council, a strategic priority was development of commercial incentive program. So, this was provided to our Economic Ad Hoc Committee, which consisted of His Worship, Mayor Roy, Counselor Jenke, and Counselor Richards. We also had Development Officer Janine Fletcher, and then Executive Director for RED and for the Chamber, Larry Heggs, a part of that committee, a part with myself. So, what we did is we reviewed our current incentives that we provided. Right now, what the city has done is when requests come for incentives for industrial and commercial businesses, it's been ad hoc. It's been a case-by-case basis, so we've reviewed what currently was occurring within that. We also did a review of other municipalities, so a number of other cities have this in place already to help their businesses provide incentives for them to do different things their businesses moving forward. So, three different areas were looked at. One was facade and site improvement, the other one is new construction, and the last was for vacant buildings. So, I'll go through some information that's been provided in the policy for council review tonight. First is objectives. So, the first objective is to improve Wayburn's competitive position in attracting and retaining businesses. Second is encourage commercial investment to create a strong local economy and expand employment opportunities for residents. The third is to support current business, businesses to expand or improve their operations in Wayburn. And their fourth is to encourage businesses to locate or expand their operations in Wayburn. Next one is to increase the long-term viability of a commercial or industrial development. And lastly, is to demonstrate the state's commitment to economic development. So, as stated, there's three program areas. I'll start with the first one, which is facade and site improvements. So, intent of this program is for improvements of all commercial industrial buildings in Wayburn, and it does not include our, our home-based businesses or our residential businesses, by encouraging the property and business owners to renovate, restore, or redesign existing building facades and sites. Once again, home occupations would not be eligible for this grant. The grant would be rebate of 25% of the combined total cost of the eligible facade and site improvements. The maximum rebate amount paid by the city shall not exceed $5,000 of eligible improvements being paid for by the owner based on $20,000 of improvements to that area. This amount will be credited to the tax roll of that property. So, looking at some areas of eligibility, these will be eligible improvements within this program: Onnings, canopies, exterior lighting, doors and entrances, siding, signage, exterior painting, window replacement, curbing, landscaping, brick cleaning, and repairs to those bricks, parking lot resurfacing, and sidewalks and walkways improvements. So, whenever we have any projects who are doing this, eligible projects must beat all applicable building codes, development requirements, and comply with zoning bylaw requirements upon completion. The project will require the land use approval through applicable development permits, sign permit, and construction approval, which may include building electrical and mechanical permits. Past improvements are not eligible, so anything that's done before, no retroactive payments. Improvements may not commence until the application has been approved by the city. Only the registered owner of the property, or the business owner, renter or leasur, who has entered into a net, a triple net lease agreement with the property at the time of commencement of the project approval is eligible for that funding. Also, for eligibility, billing must be commercially assessed, and the property must not be in arrears in taxes, municipal utilities, and other municipal charges. The property or the building is not eligible to receive tax rebate if it's been subject to other facade, facade site improvements or vacant building tax incentives under this policy within the past five years. If the property or billing was previously, and the next thing we'll talk about, which is new construction, it will not be eligible for another three years after they have that completion of that incentive, and the business is required to have a license through the City of Wayburn. So, for the application, they must fill out the commercial incentive program application, and it must be submitted to our planning and development department. All required information must be included in the application prior to being reviewed, and a project cannot qualify for more than one incentive program at a time. Second program that was reviewed by the committee was new construction, so this is the encouragement of new development, so we're looking at construction on vacant properties in, in the city. So, the following are the abatements that we're looking at. Year one, from the date of the original development permit, would be 100%. Year two, 100%. Year three, 100%. Year four, 100%, only if the project value is between 1.5 and just shy of $2.5 million, and year five, 100% for only projects that are more than $2.5 million. Much like the other program, I won't go through them all, I'll just go through the ones that've changed. New constructions on buildings on vacant property, so it must be vacant property. Construction value must be greater than $500,000. The only difference of the other program is that a property building is not eligible to receive a tax rebate if it's been subject to a tax incentive under this policy within five years, so we talked about that previously on the last incentive program. And then the same requirements for applications, same requirements for being reviewed, and same thing for, you can't apply for more than one incentive at one time. Lastly, we have vacant buildings that we've looked at, so the focus of the program is to attract new businesses and develop employment opportunities in currently vacant commercial and industrial buildings. In some cases, incentive will assist new property owners, offset the cost of having the property to meet billing code and development standards. So, for this incentive, it'd be, for one year, would be 100%. A little bit different on this one, the applicant must be new, a business, a new business to the building, so it can't be someone who's just changing over and over, it has to be someone new to that building. The building must be vacant for 12 months prior to the possession date. The onus is on the applicant to provide, the building has been vacant for 12 months. And again, much like the facade and site improvements, you can have something that, where you receive a grant and then apply again if you're a, a new construction. So, new constructions, the way it works for that is that, once a new construction's done, that's five years or wherever it is for that, three years is eligible after that. And again, application, same process as before, they must make sure they fill out the application form, they must make sure that they reviewed everything provided for that application, they can't qualify for more than one incentive program. Going, going through roles and responsibilities of this program, so City Council, they're there to review and approve updates to this policy as required, approve appropriate level of funding in accordance with the commercial incentive policy, and pursuant to the Cities Act, which is in Section 263 of the Cities Act. The Economic Ad Hoc Committee, which developed this policy for council review, review and evaluate the program outcomes, and provide recommendations to council. Planning development to promote the commercial incentive program and assist prospective applicants applying for the program. Accept and review all applications, approve applications based on the criteria set out within the policy. Provide a report to the Economic Ad Hoc Committee on an annual basis on the outcomes and any suggestions or recommendations for changes. suggestions or recommendations for changes to the program. Report program outcomes annually to city council. With our Assessment and Taxation Department, they're responsible for calculating and process all rebates for eligible properties prior to year end. Submit to city council at year end a list of properties qualifying for the program, a list of properties for which the applications for the program have been received but do not qualify for the program, a list of properties through the program that have been previously been approved and which remain eligible for taxing sessions under phasing out provisions of a policy, so making sure we keep council aware of who's been receiving funds as we go through each one of the eligible projects, and establish a separate budget item each budget year to show properties approved for this policy. Responsibility of the applicant is to cement an application form in the prescribed form provided by the Plan and Development Department for review, provide additional information as required during the application process, pay 100% of costs of eligible improvements prior to funding. Once the invoices have been paid by the owner or the applicant, these must be submitted to the city for funding. If approved, provide required follow-up documentation, which may include pictures of the work completed within quotes, receipts, and assessments as required. Also, the applicant must ensure that all taxes are kept current. If the property goes into arrears, the tax incentive becomes null and void, and only be eligible to receive once in a prescribed period. I've said that many times throughout that period. Open up for any questions from council?
Do I have a motion first for?
Yeah, I'll do the motion, Your Worship. I make a motion, another recommendation of City Manager for the approval of the commercial incentive program for the city of Waverne be approved as presented.
I'll second that, Your Worship.
Discussion. Mr. Van Betchu.
Thank you, Your Worship. Before I jump on my soapbox and tell the benefits of this program, I have a question, Matthew.
Yes.
And it's probably just a roadblock in my mind, I think. On page three, the eligibility for the new construction, and it's a property building is not eligible to receive a tax rebate if it has been subject to a tax incentive under this policy within the past five years. So that five-year period for new construction, does that start at the end of the new construction period?
Yeah, so the way it works for that, Councilor Van Betchu, is that, just clarify your question, is the question about when they start receiving the funding, or when do they?
When they're eligible again, is that it?
It's when the five years is up, so once they've received their fifth year, or three years, depends on what the construction is. It's once that period's up, and that starts up again.
I assumed it was that, but I don't think it really specifically says that in the policy, so, but anyways. Anyways, so I just, now I'm going to get on my soapbox, and I just want to commend staff and the councilors that sat on this committee. We've been talking about this, and our Larry Heggs also from the chamber. We've been talking about this for a few years, and it's great to get this program in place. I think it's very, very well-written. It covers all the questions, and people will be able to read it. And the timing turns out, I think, quite good, is that we all hope we're getting towards the end of COVID, and, you know, maybe put some incentive for people to get excited about either renovating in their business, moving into a new spot, or building a whole new building. So I'm very excited about it. I've been a strong proponent for getting this put forward, and I thank you and the staff for getting this accomplished. Thank you.
Mr. Mickle?
Thank you.
Your Worship, yes, I too want to thank the committee for sure, especially Larry. He paid me to say that. No, he didn't, seriously. It's great to see, and I'll tell you something else, you know, you talk about things that things never get done, they never get done, but just this proves a point. The longer you work on things, it does get done. I guess I put that in context with these people that want the truck truck to move around the city. You're right, but we've got to keep working at it to make it done. However, I do have some questions for City Manager. City Manager Matthew, if I just moved into the city and saw this program on my computer tomorrow morning, who would I ask for when I come into City Hall?
You go into our Plan and Development Department, so our key right now will be Janine Fletcher will be the key for that. When we do our advertising, so there is actually an ad that we actually have attached to the program that actually states that, it states exactly who you should contact, and it'll be Plan and Development for all questions, all applications. That department will also be reviewing all applications and providing recommendations going forward for anything that meets the criteria listed within the policy.
Thank you, Matthew. The last question, is there any review process to do after the first few years to see if this actually works?
Yeah, so what the committee really talked about is having a yearly review. So this will be a yearly review, so it'll be done first by administration, so our Plan and Development Department, also our Building Department will be reviewing this, providing recommendations to our Ad Hoc Committee, then in turn, Ad Hoc, providing recommendations to council moving forward. The plan, because it is a new program that we've never done before, is to have a yearly review and keep that consistent to make sure that we're fulfilling everything we want to do within businesses, and making required changes if required moving forward.
Please, Mr. Mr. Richards?
Yeah, thanks, Your Worship. I think that it's important that Councilor Van Betchu and Councilor Mickle both already acknowledged this. This was a lot of work, and these don't come easy, these kind of policies, so I pulled all my hair out working on this one, whereas Jenke, he took it a little easier than me. Look, he looks great. Although a lot of work happened in City Hall, I don't want to overlook the contribution of our Regional Economic Development Board, that's Larry Heggs and his board, because it's important that the business community, both the Chamber and the EcDev Board, had an opportunity to also look at this, because these are folks that are doing this all the time. They're investing in our community, and they're doing upgrades to commercial buildings. So to those guys, I also want to say thanks, because this was a lot of work, so kudos to the team down the street as well, and to our folks. The City Manager really, he really quarterbacked this to the end, so thank you.
Any other comments? Mr. Jenke?
Thank you, Your Worship. I'll echo the rest of the committee's comments, and thanking everyone, Larry, the rest of the group, the committee who was involved. The one thing I would add to what we've already said is that I would encourage anybody who is considering any kind of renovations to take a look at this program. I mean, it doesn't work unless people take advantage of it, and I think it's a real opportunity here for our community.
And just to clarify, when we developed this, there's no cap on it, Mr. Warren?
No, that's correct.
Not currently?
No, you're correct, Your Worship. So that's a part of the review for the first year, there's no cap for the very first year. We wanted to incentivize as many people as we can, ensure that people can do things to their buildings. A big part of that is the site and the facade improvement, we can see a lot of businesses who want to see that. You have to realize for a new construction, that's actually new tax revenue to the city, so that would be no change to what we do for taxation. The vacant property and the facade and site improvement are the two that would be changes within our taxation, but right now, there's no cap on that. The one thing I did fail to mention is implementation date, would be January 1st of 2022, would be my recommendation to council as well.
And then we'll review again the program at the end of next year, '22, to see if we should have a cap or not.
Yeah, the plan would be have a review to council by November, December of next year.
Let's see how it goes, and tweak it at that time. Any further comments? No further comments? All in favor? Jerry Ndambe. Very good, thank you. TC Douglas Water Usage, Director of Finance, Ms. Al.
Good evening. So we received a letter from Mr. Wormsbecker. So he first contacted the city on October 15th regarding the utility invoice that was received at 410th Avenue Southeast, which is the Tommy Douglas Center, and it was for the water between August 1st and August 31st. So during this billing period, a total of 188 cubic meters was registered through the water meter for this account, while the average month is usually about 20 cubes. It was discussed with him that there could be a leaking toilet again at this location, and he was, and Mr. Wormsbecker asked why he had not been notified of a leak. So it was explained to him that it's not finance or the city's responsibility to catch a leak and to notify the account owner. Not all leaks are caught by our staff, and if we do find them, it's a courtesy that we have, if we do notify the homeowner. So Mr. Wormsbecker was asked if he was checking his ion water account, and he stated, no, he had not checked it, so that's the online account where you can see if you have a leak. And we were also asked if he'd been checking the building regularly, and he stated, no, due to COVID, he'd not been checking the building. So Mr. Wormsbecker was also asked about the leak alerts that you can have through the ion water account, and after checking the Tommy Douglas account in Beacon, which is our software, it was identified that the leak alert was not set up. And so we contacted our support with Beacon to see about an alert, as Mr. Wormsbecker had indicated that they had been getting the alerts previously. So we did have a server change, and so Mr. Wormsbecker had questioned our server change. So in December 2020, we changed from being on a US site to a Canadian site, and he suggested that the server change deleted his alert. But after speaking with Beacon, they confirmed that all data and alerts had been changed over with no issues, and at that time, we had also checked to make sure that was occurring. So after we talked to the Beacon tech support, they confirmed that there was no alert, and the only time it had been set up was after the leak had stopped on October 15th, after we had identified it. So the average utility invoice for the Tommy Douglas Center is approximately $86 a month with an average use of 20 cubes. A total of 188 cubic meters has gone through the meter in August of 2021, and 373 cubic meters went through in September of 2021. A slow toilet leak can typically waste 30 gallons a day, while a medium leak can typically waste 250 gallons, which is 1 cubic meter, a day, and a large leak can waste up to 4,000 gallons, and that's 15 cubic meters a day, which is similar to the usage occurring during the leak at the Tommy Douglas Center. So it is the recommendation that no reimbursement be granted, as the utility billing and collection policy states in Section 2.16, that all water that passes through the meter shall be charged at the current rate regardless of if it was used or wasted. It is the user's responsibility to ensure that all usage is as intended.
Do I have a motion, please? I know that we, go ahead with this recommendation of no reimbursement.
Motion, just get it on the floor, Your Worship. I'll make a motion that we accept the recommendation from our city finance officer that we abide by the bylaw and do not allow for a discount in pricing.
Second?
I can second that, Your Worship.
Discussion?
I'll, I'll start. Thanks for your thoroughness. This is a struggle. Over the last few years, I've been a part of three of these. Kudos to city staff, caught one of them, one of them I caught with the app, and one of them went completely undetected. And far as I know, I paid the bill on all three. Doesn't speak much to my plumbing skills, I concur. However, we're lucky, we have the technology, and it's getting better. Without the technology, some of these would go undetected for many, many months, so it's not ideal, but it's the world we live in, and leaks happen, and we have to be diligent with that.
Go ahead.
We tested to see if this is a known issue with this app, that it's allowing credentials from the Canadian site to log into the American site but not give the same data?
They just switched over, so when we first went with Beacon, it was through an American site, because there was no Canadian, and then they switched it all.
The reason I ask is I tried logging in with my own today and found out I could log into both sites, but they didn't show the same data. One showed zero usage, and one showed correct usage.
Don't know.
Mr. Mickle? Nothing? No further comment? Go ahead, Jennifer.
Well, the US site wouldn't show any data usage anymore, because our beacons are not set up through that US site anymore. When they developed, when they came through with the Canadian site, because they had a lot more Canadian municipalities using it, they switched to its own platform. So you're not going to see anything through the US site anymore, because none of our beacons are set up through the US site. So that's why you'd have no water usage on your US site, it would only be through the Canadian, because that's the site you're set up through now. So that would make sense, you would have no usage on the US.
That makes sense. It was very confusing, though, I thought that I could log into both of them, even though one had data and one didn't have.
Yeah, and at the time, we did issue and speak with some people about the changeover, because I know people were confused that they were switched to a Canadian site, and there was some confusion, and we dealt with that, but it never really, it never changed anybody's accessibility to their data, it didn't change any of the alerts, it didn't change anything through that, there was just more of a confusion on relogging in if you'd gotten logged out.
Mr. Van Betchu?
Yeah, I agree, Jen, I think I've done that, and I've logged on to the US site by accident, but once it shows zero usage, it's fairly obvious you're on the wrong, you're obviously using water, but anyway. Laura, I was just wondering, a few years ago, I think we ran into a similar situation, and I can't remember whether we did anything as a city, and maybe you know whether we gave them a discount on the sewer rate, or we discharged them on the water, and...
I don't think we did, or not, but I'm pretty sure we didn't, we don't generally give discounts, because it's their responsibility to make sure they're checking.
Right, yeah, I thought we had gone through it one other time a few years ago, and we had denied it, but I wasn't sure.
Mr. Corrigan?
Thank you, Your Worship. Laura, just to be clear, there's no evidence that an alert was on the account prior to the October date?
No, it showed that there was no alert set up, so the user has to set up an alert.
Right, and there's no evidence that that had been done prior to that date? Thank you.
Further questions? Go ahead, Mr. Jenke.
I understand that there was no alert set up, and that, yeah, Councilor Van Betchu was correct. When I logged in and saw zero water usage, I knew that that wasn't correct, but I'm a little uncomfortable with doing nothing when there is at least a little bit of a technical malfunction here, where the American site should not be allowed to log in at all.
Go ahead.
With that, I actually was part of a water leak that was detected earlier this year by the city, and the organization didn't know that there was a water leak until they received their bill, and, you know, they were advised to get the ion water and monitor their water usage a little better. I understand it's COVID, and it's hard to get up to that building, and they are a nonprofit, but I think if we do it for one, then we have to do it for everyone.
Okay. So the question, the motion is that we follow the recommendations on here and give no reimbursement? Call the question, all in favor? Opposed? One opposed? Six in favor, one opposed. Motion goes forward. That is it for all the new business. Inquiries and announcements? Any inquiries and announcements? So then, with that, I have a few here. So effective January 1st, the regular scheduled city council meetings will begin at 6:00 PM. Therefore, on January 10th, 2022, and moving forward, regular council meetings will begin at 6:00 PM, with the strategic planning and priorities meeting beginning at 5:00 PM, taking a break if we are not completed, and finish taking up again after council meeting. For further information, please contact City Clerk Richter, or go to the city website to view the 2022 council meeting schedule on www.waverne.ca. City Hall will be closed December 24th, 27th, and December 31st. January 1st also?
That's Saturday, so yesterday.
Yes, it is Saturday. And all city facility holiday hours are on the city website, www.waverne.ca. With that, I wish to wish all citizens of Waverne Merry Christmas to all, and have a very good Christmas festival time, have a good New Year's, and we will see you next year. Isn't that kind of interesting? We'll see you next year. Yes, and with that, we will close the meeting.